Okay, welcome to those that have joined us from home, as well as those that have joined us here in council chambers. This is the first meeting of 2019, it is January fourteenth, and this is a meeting of the Pecosin City Council. I will tell you, as I call this meeting to order, that the format's gonna be a little different tonight, and that is because it is the first meeting of a new council, despite the fact that this council looks like the same one that you left in 2018. Councilman Southall, Councilman Freeman, and Councilman Green were re-elected to their seats, and this is their first meeting of their new term. They were sworn in in late December, before they took the, before the New Year hit, and I, one, congratulate those for winning reelection, and I know it was a hard-fought, unopposed election. But you are in your new term, and therefore it's a new council. So, as we, once we open the meeting this evening, we will be going quickly into closed session to talk about a few personnel things, we'll come right back out, and we will get on with things. The agenda is set up, so that new employees will be recognized before we go into closed session, but any other business will take place after that point. So I just wanted to call that to your attention, so you don't think, hey, it's 2019, and council's gonna go back here and just talk. All right? If you all please rise, I'll lead you in the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, and the many blessings we look forward to in the year 2019. We thank you for those blessings that we received in 2018. The city thanks you for everything that, we were very fortunate, as a city, to receive your blessing in that year. As we look forward to 2019, we ask for a portion of your guidance, as we lead this city in a continuing path forward, and as always, we ask for a blessing on those who are serving in our military, especially those serving in foreign lands, as well as our public safety employees that serve us here in our city, our state, and our nation. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I don't see Josh Jordan here, so we're just gonna skip that item on the agenda. We are under special presentations, and the next item is introduction of new and newly employed, newly promoted employees, and we do have a host of new and newly promoted. So Randy, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We're very happy tonight to introduce you to some new people that have joined the city workforce, and also to recognize and present to you some folks who have, through their hard work and dedication, have qualified themselves for promotion within the city. First up, we'll introduce our new employees in Public Works. Brad Wilk, until you know, will make the introductions on behalf of the Public Works Department.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. We do have three new employees, so come on up.
Don't be shy, come on up.
Yeah, come on up. Because you will see them on the road sometimes. This is Curtis Rowe, Dave Thomas, and Jeremy Daly.
All right. Would y'all like to introduce yourselves?
Go ahead.
Tell us about yourselves.
Good evening. My name's Curtis Rowe, and I am ecstatically happy about this opportunity to work for the city of Pecosin, and I would think that I will strive to keep up good stewardship in the current employees that they have been doing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm David Thomas. I would just like to start by saying that I grew up here, I, since I think I moved here when I was in third grade, all the way through high school. You know, it's, I had a great childhood here, and I'm very thankful and grateful for the job, and happy to be here, and, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jerome Daly. I'm originally from Kansas City, Missouri. I moved here in the March of 2017 to be with my wife, who I met the previous summer, and I'm very happy and privileged to work for Pecosin Public Works, and I look forward to this coming year, and hope to strive for excellence.
Okay, thank you very much. Brandon, welcome to all three of you. We look forward to seeing you, and you will find us probably out on the street, and it's not because we think that you're not doing something, it's because we're a small city, and we see you all the time, okay? But welcome, I look forward to seeing you and serving with you as we move this city forward, but great job, and really appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I would also like to take an opportunity to reintroduce to you, but in a new capacity, Mark Boson. Members of council, you are certainly familiar with Mark. Mark has been part of our leadership team in the Public Works Department since prior to my arrival, and with the departure of Mr. Cagle and some other things, we changed the way we structured that department, and Mark's position has been sort of goalless around the idea of providing assistant leadership to the department. His new position is Public Works Manager. He continues to have the other duties or responsibilities he's always had, as with regard to his construction management, but we're very thankful for Mark, and anything you'd like to say, Mark?
Yeah, I'd like to thank council, the mayor, and the city manager for giving me this opportunity, and I will continue to serve the city at the highest caliber that I'm able to, so thank you.
Mark, you do a great job for us already, and we just look forward to you in your new position, and now I understand why you said "and other duties" as a side, so I got that, okay? So, we look forward to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, next up, sir, we're fortunate to have two new folks working with us in utilities. Kaj Kijerek is here, you'll recall meeting Chad in his new capacity in your, at your December meeting, and he will reintroduce to you his new two employees.
Good evening, Mayor, city manager, and council members. It's my honor to introduce two of our new employees in the utilities department, Mr. Joshua Tall and Mr. Richard Smith.
Welcome.
My name is Joshua Tall, I'm super happy to be here, and been given this opportunity to be a part of the city of Pecosin. I've lived here for a little over a year now, with my wife and child, she's five, and I'm just super happy to be here. Any and everything I can do, I will do, and I thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Richard Smith, I was a graduate of Pecosin High School. I've lived in Pecosin about half of my life, currently reside on Cedar Road, and I come to this job as a lawnmower mechanic of all things, but I'm super honored to have the opportunity to serve the city of Pecosin, and I look forward to getting a lot of good work done, so thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. And lastly, sir, I recognize our police chief, Cliff Bowen, who will introduce the returning of one of our employees, and also share with you two promotions.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Wheeler, members of council, it really is a great day for us. We had a promotional ceremony in council chambers this afternoon at 3:30, and had the opportunity to recognize two of our young, up-and-coming police supervisors. We've also had one return to us, who left several years ago. She was gonna be a little late getting here, she may not make it, but Brandy Gills has decided to leave her position with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office and victim witness and come back and work for the police department. So she has still been serving the citizens of Pecosin in her position with victim witness, and we are proud to have her back, and she's doing a great job, hitting the ground running already, so, she had a conflict tonight, so, but you already know her, and you'll see her around, and we're excited to have her back. January first of this year, something very unique happened in my 12-year tenure here. We lost Captain Percy Ward to retirement, and after 41 years of service to this city, and what a privilege it was to work next to a man with his experience, and his demeanor, and his ability to really pretty much solve any problem by just talking to folks, and, but one of the things that he did, that we did together, was that we talked often about preparing others to lead, once we both were gone, and how much important it was to leave a legacy of leadership behind, and Percy did an outstanding job of working with some of our younger members of the department, to make sure that when he retired, there were people in place that could do that job as well as he could, if not better. And that is a, that is a true legacy to his leadership and his skills, and a quality, says something about our ability to hire and retain highly qualified people. So I'm very pleased tonight to introduce Percy's replacement, and a young man who's been with us for 12 years, Kelly Waddell, who was promoted to captain today. Kelly will be the, serving as the Assistant Chief of Police to the department, directly overseeing patrol operations, and I can only tell you that in the 12 years he's been here, I was able to hire him away from Newport News in my first six months here, and we have not been disappointed one day with his service to the city, and he's been promoted previously to sergeant, and to lieutenant, and now to captain, and I am excited about what the future holds for the police department under his leadership and his guidance, so. So Kelly Waddell, and then second, is one of our own, Ty D. Farrington Jr. TJ's been with us since 2011, and has also been promoted previously to sergeant, and he is now the Patrol Operations Lieutenant, and oversees the men and women who work directly in the Patrol Operations section of the police department. Both of these young men understand that leadership is not about position, it's about how you influence other people. We've talked about that, we've talked about that today, and I can tell you that we have selected two young men to become, to be promoted because of the leadership they have, and that we can entrust the lives of other people to them, in terms of their supervision, their mentorship, and how they will help the city stay safe. So I am extremely happy today, and was very proud to be able to tell both of them, tomorrow you get more work, so, and they're gonna assist me, they're gonna assist me in my last few years here, in preparing themselves to one day to lead this agency. So I will allow each one of them to come up and say something, but Kelly, your new Assistant Chief of Police, Kelly Waddell.
Good evening, council. Just want to thank chief for the opportunity. As he said, I'm in my 12th year with the city of Pecosin, thoroughly enjoyed my time here in the city. I've got some big shoes to fill with Captain Ward leaving. He was a loved member of our agency, a lot of experience has gone with him, but I'm ready to get going and do what I can to help move the city forward.
Look forward to it, Assistant Chief.
Thank you.
See you.
Good evening, how are y'all?
Hey, good.
First, I want to say, I've been, I was born and raised in this city. I've been here ever since I can remember, went through grade school here, high school. I'm very excited and proud to give back to this community that I was raised in. I walked these streets and played in these streets, and even as a young man, drove around these streets, and it was safe, it was secure, it was a great place to live. I'm excited, I've been here almost nine years, I'm excited to work my way back up to lieutenant, and to give back to this community, to keep it that safe city that we love so much. I'm excited to lead everyone in patrol, to be just as good as me, if not better. That's my goal, and I look forward to the future here at the police department.
Look forward to working with you, Lieutenant. Great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all. Anyone else, Randy?
No, sir.
Okay. So as everybody at home can tell, and everybody here, that we've had a turnover in the city in 2019, I think it's gonna be great, really do. It's time, it's time for change, I think you'll see some changes across the city in the next few years as well, but a whole new crop of Pecosin as we, as we continue to age as a city, and a great city that was built, and a great city now that will be led by the younger generation. I'm ready for a closed session, if council is ready for that.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we convene a closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended to discuss personnel matters, i.e. city manager's contract, and pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended to discuss a specific legal matter requiring the advice of legal counsel.
Okay. Motion made, second, that we go to closed session. E.V., please.
Certainly. Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
Okay, we'll make this as brief as possible, be right back. We're back from closed session. If you're joining from Verizon, we believe that we just, we got, we came on late, this is a meeting of the Pecosin City Council from Monday, January fourteenth. It is a new council in session, although it's the same council from reelections in 2018, but we went to closed session to talk about the city manager's contract, and to talk about a specific legal matter. We completed that discussion in closed session, I'll ask council for certification of that closed session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we certify our closed session, and that we talk about only what we convene the closed session to talk about.
Okay, motion made, and second, we certify that closed session. E.V., please.
Certainly. Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
Okay, I understand we want to modify the agenda that we've got here, is there a motion that we modify the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we modify our agenda to add, under new business, item number four, a resolution approving an employment agreement with the city manager.
There, a second. Okay, motion made, and second, that we modify the agenda to add the contract of the city manager. E.V., please.
Certainly. Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Council, Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
Okay, very well. The next item on the agenda is item F, and this would be for 2019, the election of the Vice Mayor, appointment of the city manager, city clerk, city attorney, and deputy city clerk. I would like to take those individually, please. All right, so is there a motion on election of the Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we elect as our Vice Mayor Kerry L. Freeman, and assert his name in the resolution.
Second.
Okay, motion made, and second, that Kerry continue as our Vice Mayor. Questions or comments? Seeing none, E.V., please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Abstain.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero with one abstain.
All right, very well, congratulations. Okay, next would be the appointment of the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution appointing the city manager of the city of Pecosin with the name of Jay Randall Wheeler inserted.
Okay, motion made, and second, that we reappoint Randy as our city manager. Questions or comments? Didn't think there would be any, E.V., please.
Certainly. Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the vote carried by a vote of seven zero.
Thank you very much, outstanding job, Randy, appreciate your willingness to go with us for another two years. Okay, the city attorney, might prepare with a motion there. Did I skip one?
You skipped one.
I'm sorry, city clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution appointing the city clerk of the city of Pecosin, Virginia, with the name of E.V. Insley inserted.
Second. Okay, motion made, and second, that we appoint E.V. as our, in her continued service as the city clerk. Questions or comments? E.V., please.
Certainly, thank you. Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
Okay, thank you very much. And the next one is the city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution appointing the city attorney of the city of Pecosin, Virginia, with the name D. Wayne Moore inserted.
Second.
Okay, motion made, and second, that we appoint our council, Mr. Wayne Moore, as our city attorney. E.V., please.
Certainly. Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Council, Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
And finally, deputy city clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution appointing the deputy city clerk of the city of Pecosin, Virginia, with the name Kimberly A. Healy inserted.
Second. Okay, motion made, and second, that we appoint the deputy city clerk. E.V., please.
Certainly. Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried with a vote of seven zero.
Okay, thank you very much to council, thank you very, very much to those that are willing to serve in these positions again. It was, as I said, and as I opened this meeting, it was an excellent 2018, an excellent 2017, and it built into that, and we look forward to y'all in these positions. Great job, and we are very solid as a city with your, with your help in managing us, so thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda is an audience for visitors. If anybody in the audience would like to address council, now is that time. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors, and ask council for consideration of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of our regular session of December the 10th, 2018.
Second. Motion made, and second, that we approve the minutes of the regular session of December 10th. E.V., please.
Yes, sir. Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Council, Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the vote carried by a vote of seven zero.
Okay, under new business now, resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Virginia Peninsula Public Service Authority for a curbside recycling. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have presenting, on behalf of staff tonight, our Public Works Department Director, Tom Jones, and also Stephen Geisler from VIPSa. As council will recall, we've had discussions over the past six or seven months about the changing nature of both the local and worldwide recycling markets, and we have been working together with our VIPSa partners to, to work towards a new contract, the contract we run is expiring this fiscal year. Mr. Geisler, Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones serves as your representative to VIPSa, will summarize that for you, and are here to, to answer your questions. That, Tom, you want to come forward, please?
Yeah, I wanted to introduce Steve, he's gonna come up here with me, and, you know, basically, this is like a new contract coming up, that the city, you know, could be entered into, and I just wanted to kind of go over a quick overview of, you know, some things that I guess the regular citizens don't know, you know, like the, kind of the cost of our recycling program now, the cost is going up into this new contract, and Steve will answer any questions on that, but I wanted everybody to think of, like, right now, you know, the, the amount of recyclables that people put out. Pecosin has the highest rate of any other locality in the recycling business, and if we went away from recycling, I just wanted everyone here to know, and the citizens at home to know, the, the cost would probably go up significantly because of the amount of recycling that we actually put out. Most residents put out minimum, and I'll base it like on a 65-gallon cart, you know, if you put out a 65-gallon trash container, they're putting minimum of a 65-gallon recycling container full, and if we went away from the recycling program, that trash has to go somewhere, and we all know how, you know, light recycling materials are, so it would take at least one additional cart, sometimes more, because some folks actually put out 90-gallon containers, and then some folks actually have two of those, so, just wanted everybody to understand, not just the tonnage that would go into our trash, which the tonnage, you know, it's quite a bit of tonnage of recycling, but that wouldn't be the whole cost, the cost would be getting the additional cart. And I could go into the, you know, what an additional 65-gallon cart would cost, if you have any questions about that, so, and I've got the tonnage that, you know, we hauled last year, you know, I could give you that number, but like I say, that number isn't the, the big cost, the big cost would be getting the additional carts, and we may even have to revamp our trash contract, because there'll be so much additional debris to get rid of, so, I'm, yes, sir?
Thanks, Tom, for that, members of council. I'd asked Tom to talk about that specifically, it's in your staff memo, and he began to go there, our current cost per household is $1.58 a month, that's how much recycling costs as part of that bill that we all get every other month when living in the city. And what's being proposed here through the competitive bid process is an increase from that $1.58 to $5.66. That's a substantial increase, and Mr. Geisler will provide additional information as sort of the changes in the market that are driving that, but, you know, not that we would truly ever consider abandoning recycling, but, you know, when something goes up by that much cost, you sort of have to ask yourself, at what point is it more expensive to recycle it? And, and the short version of that is, we looked at that pretty carefully, and we don't think we're anywhere close to that point. The cost to, to put it into the regular waste stream, in terms of tonnage and collection, as well as additional carts, would far exceed the average monthly cost of $5.66.
Okay. Is there any other questions I can answer? No, thank you, and thank you all for doing that, that look, and I agree with Randy, I know the council's aware of this, but a lot of this tonight is for the citizens, because they've heard us talk about it, but it's 300% increase, at least?
Just about.
And so when we, we talk about that, we, all you're basically saying is, we looked at the other options, and it's still cheaper to continue to do recycling for, for the citizens, and the right thing to do for the environment. Exactly. Steve? We look forward to you, Steve, thanks. Thanks, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor Hunt, members of council, thank you for having me here. What I'd like to do is just take a few minutes and put some flesh on this, this significant price increase, and try and give you some background on, on what's been happening, and why we're looking at such a large increase. Our current contract expires this coming June, and our practice over the years has been to issue or request or proposals about a year in advance, so our plan was to issue an RFP in, in the summer of 2018, and that gives us enough time to go through the procurement process, and then if we have a new contractor, gives him time to, to buy vehicles or equipment that he needs to buy. In September 2017, the China announced what they called the National Sword, and the National Sword consisted of a ban or restriction on many recyclables coming into the country. The ones of interest to us were mixed paper, corrugated cardboard, and plastics. Prior to 2018, and, and for many years, a significant portion of recyclable materials collected, not only in the United States, but from around the world, were purchased by China, and in 2018, they said that they were gonna put a significant ban. In the United States, about two-thirds of the mixed paper that we collected went to China, about one-third of the corrugated cardboard that we collected went to China. And when they enacted that, that, the National Sword in January, that flow was essentially And when they enacted that, that, the National Sword in January, that flow was essentially cut off to zero. There are many markets in the United States for mixed paper and corrugated cardboard, but the, the National Sword led to a significant oversupply of both mixed paper and corrugated cardboard. What that meant is, when you have that oversupply, we have a significant decrease in the, in the, in, in the price that is paid or the cost for the material. The contractors who provide us services have two sources of revenue. The one source is the fee that they charge us to collect the material. The second source of revenue is this, the revenue that they get from the sale of recyclable materials. And the mixed paper, which makes up a large fraction of their income, the, the price just dropped. And, for example, we, the VIPSa collects mixed paper up on the middle peninsula. We were, we were receiving in 2017, we were receiving over $100 a ton. This past summer, we were making $2, we got received $2 a ton. Right now, we're back up to about $20 a ton. This, the fees that, that we received and that, that we'll be paying reflect the going rate right now in, in southeast Virginia. There are other localities that have gone through the procurement process about the same time that we, that we did, and they had essentially the same results that, that we did. The, the National Sword has had a significant increase on the prices and the revenue that is received by the contractors, but it has not had an impact on the ability to, to market and to recycle those materials. So, we can, we have confidence and we have, we've been assured that the materials that we place into our carts will in fact be recycled. The contractor that we're, we're looking at is TFC Recycling, which is the same contractor that we used from 2001 to 2014. We had, we had a great experience with them for 12 years, and we're looking for a good experience over the next five years. And again, you know, we, we, we hit the market at just the wrong time. Five years ago, we had a, a very, very aggressive contractor who gave us a very attractive price. Five years ago, I came here and told you how we were cutting our price in half. So, we have, we, essentially, we've gone from just about the lowest price in the reason, in the region to one of the highest prices in, in, in the region. And again, this is part of a, a regional agreement. I was at the Williamsburg City Council last week. They approved the agreement. Tomorrow, I'll go to the York County Board of Supervisors, and they'll consider it, and then next week, I will go to the James City Council Board of Supervisors.
Okay, thank you very much. I guess the, the, as I try to think about, as the citizens or even I'm going to ask this question, we're going to change contractors to TFC in the longer term. Is that going to change the container that we have today at the street? Are we going to go back to bins? Are we going to be able to stay with the, the roller container?
The contract calls for, for bins, and as my understanding, correct me, that there's actually been some talk between our current vendor and the one who's going to be taking over the contract to, to, to compensate them and actually potentially buy one from the other. So, no, we're not, we're not anticipating changing at all.
We don't have the firm answer, and we're looking at that, and the, this contract would take place.
The firm answer is, we will continue to have carts. It's just a question of will they buy the existing carts and then change from one company
I just wanted to make sure we weren't going back to the, to the small bins.
to the next.
But in any case, TFC will provide them, whether they buy the ones we got now, whether they.
That is correct. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Okay. Questions of council?
Gene, I just, since this is such a significant increase, could we just tell the citizens what the difference is in the price of, if we did away with the recycling, totally went to trash, what is that difference in the price? I know you said it's significant, but just so the citizens of them know, we're not jumping at something and we don't know what we're talking about. What is that number?
Let me, let me say that, I guess what, what I do here is, and when does this contract come in?
It starts July 1st, 2000.
July 1st, which is also the beginning of the next fiscal year, right? So, we have a budget process to go through. So, I think the report tonight is, we have the substantial increase. We have the, the, the returns on that, and then I don't want council to, I mean, I don't want staff to just, unless you're comfortable, I don't want y'all to just shoot a price out there that you, that somebody's going to challenge later. So, if you've got it, great. If you don't, we can bring that up next week, right?
We, unless Tom has something that I'm unaware of, we calculated it sitting around a table with the, with the tonnage and the various fee structures, but I don't think that we, that we wrote it down to the point that I could tell you it was $21.14 because of the various assumptions on the number of additional carts and the issues pertaining to having to go back and potentially renegotiate an existing solid waste contract within. At some point, we stopped quantifying it when we got two or three times.
So, let me ask you this question. The disposal cost for refuge, do we know what that tonnage equivalent is?
For, I can give you, like, the disposal cost for the amount of recyclables that we had last year. The disposal cost alone on that was a little over $43,000. And I can also tell you that if, you know, hypothetically, if everyone went, you know, the, the volume is so large of the recycling, if everybody, and I based this on a 65-gallon cart, you know, if I have a 65-gallon cart and I need an additional 65-gallon cart, that's what I would need. A 65-gallon cart right now costs $41 bi-monthly. If I went to a second one, it would be $75 bi-monthly, and the add, the cost, the difference in cost to the homeowner would be $34. That's pretty significant.
As compared to.
And that, so, so the number is huge to what it would cost based on that.
I think that gives us a rough order of magnitude cost. Does that answer your question, buddy?
Yeah, that's all I was asking for, is, you know, we're saying, okay, this is, we're going from a dollar and something to $5.66. That's a big increase.
Yeah.
Okay, what is it if we went to all trash? And it's $21 and something a ton more, so it's obviously still in our best interest to recycle.
And that's even if you went to a 30, if, if you doubled, if you had a 35-gallon cart bi-monthly, right now, we're paying $24.75 bi-monthly. If you upgrade that, you have to go to a 65, which would put you at $41, and the, you know, the, the, the rate on that, you're still looking at over $16 extra you'd be paying. So, either way you look at it, and, you know, we tried to go back and research, you know, what you asked, Mr. Green, and it's really, the way it's set up, I mean, it's all, you can't get that exact number, so we got the.
Not asking for the exact number, I'm just saying.
You answer.
We're not looking at $5.75 opposed to $5.66.
Yeah, it wasn't an easy task, but I think we.
At least three times more.
It's going to be a lot more, and that's, that's just in the cart. That takes away, I didn't even add that $43,000 disposal fee in that, you know, so, okay? Any other questions?
Well, not of you, but of council, just in general. What we're doing tonight is looking, if we want to approve this contract, then we got from now until May, when we do a budget, to decide how much we're going to charge the citizens. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And to that point, we'll be looking at the combination of recycled trash and sewer when we, when we figure that rate. But this is a, a large jump, but one to $5, so, so citizens know what is at least there from the recycled part.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Is there a motion that we proceed with this?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Virginia Peninsula's Public Service Authority Special Project Agreement Curbside Recycling Project for the curbside collection of recyclables.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made in second that we enter into a contract with VIPSa for continued recycling services. All right. Questions or comments? Seeing none, E.V., please.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman. Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Canelle.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried with a vote of seven zero.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Geisler, for, one, for your attendance here this evening, but more, be quite frank, we saw this coming several months back, thanks to VIPSa looking after all of the communities. We thank you for that as a public service authority, and thank you for keeping us appraised. This was not a surprise to council, while it might be a surprise to some of our citizens, we've been talking about it for a while, and that's, that goes to you. So, thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with, with Vision Government Solutions for Statement of Work Phase Two, providing the new real estate assessment software. Now, I understand why the assessor was here this evening. I thought he had a new employee.
He looks very nice, doesn't he? Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'll ask the assistant city manager, Graham Wilson, to come forward and, and present this brief. Mr. Fason is here as well, as in part of the team working on this, but, and of course, Mr. Fason is available for any detailed questions you may have.
Mr. Fason's here to answer all the tough questions, in other words.
Okay, got it.
Mr. Mayor and all members of council, presented tonight for your consideration is, is this a resolution to enter into a contract with Vision Government Solutions. City council previously entered into a contract with Vision Government Solutions for this reassessment software package, and we've been, you know, going through the process of integrating that system into, with our assessor's office. During the course of our implementation, it was determined that we needed to have an expanded scope of work, and so we have in front of you tonight an expanded statement of work that's necessary to ensure that the new system fully integrates itself with the financial software that we use, which is the Bright system, and also with the Geo Decisions, which is previously Worldview, which is our GIS system. The cost for this work is $24,800, and it's going to be incurred next fiscal year. So, one of the reasons, the main reason we're here, because that is within the parameters of the manager to sign a contract, but this money will be incurred next fiscal year, and we cannot spend money that has not been appropriated, so we're here tonight to get your approval for that. Another important facet to this is during the process of our Vision software implementation, we were second in line behind York County. York County experienced some delays with their implementation, like we did. That put York County behind us in the schedule process, and so this step back for us puts us back into a more comfortable position where we are following York County's lead because they have multiple, more people than we do to process this implementation through the same types of systems that we have. And so, it kind of puts us behind York County in line, which is perfectly timed for us with regards to our reassessment that Mr. Fason is currently working on, which will not be delayed in any way whatsoever with regards to this, this proposal tonight.
Okay.
And so, that's everything that I have. If anybody has any questions about this, I'll be happy to answer them, and of course, Mr. Fason is here as well.
Questions of council? Is seeing none, is anybody prepared to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Vision Government Solutions for Statement of Work Phase Two, providing new real estate assessment software.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second that we approve this resolution. E.V., please.
Certainly. Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Canelle. Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman. Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
Okay, the next item is a resolution in support of legislation proposed by delegate Helsel in regards to workers' comp presumption of compensative, compensability for certain diseases.
Yes, sir. I could, I would just note for the council that you have an amended version of the resolution at your place, and the amendment is to, to appro, to accurately reflect the House bill number, which when this original was put in your package, had not been assigned yet, so that House bill is 1804.
And, let's see, just a, a real brief go-through for what this really is. It's not often that we, that we say, hey, we're behind something with the state. It's certainly down their lane, but this one is particularly important to our firefighters in the Virginia Workers', Workers' Compensation Act, and if you want to go through any of that, why this council would be concerned about it.
Please to answer that. I would also defer to Councilman Canelle if he'd like to add in, since this was brought at his suggestion, but essentially what this amendment does, it's to the state workers' compensation code, is adds cancer, specifically colon cancer, brain cancer, or cancer of the testes, to the list of cancers that are presumed to be an occupational disease covered by the Virginia Workers' Compensation Act, and firefighters and certain other employees develop that cancer. Measure removes the compensability requirement for that the employee who develops cancer has had, had to demonstrate that they had, had contact with that substance in the line of duty. So, there are certain types of illnesses that Virginia code says are unfortunately part and parcel with that line of work, and the presumption then, should a person come down with one of those medical ailments, is that it was work-related. It eases the process and the burden of getting workers' compensation and potentially, in some cases, line of duty for those persons.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about that? Is there a motion that we proceed with this?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution in support of legislation proposed by delegate Helsel in regard to workers' compensation presumption, presumption of compensability for certain diseases.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second that we lend our support through resolution that Councilman Helsel's bill, House bill, and the Senate, and the comparable Senate bill. E.V., please.
Vice Mayor Freeman. Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Canelle.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
Okay, now we're on to the new item four, which is a resolution approving an employment agreement with the city manager. Is someone prepared with a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving an employment agreement with the city manager.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made in second that we approve the resolution, and with that being said, E.V., please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
I'm making out an enthusiastic guy.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Canelle.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the vote carried, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero with one in, very enthusiastic.
I'm looking forward to how you put that in the minutes. All right. So, comments of the newly reappointed city manager?
Well, I would just like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's been a, a very good, almost 10 years for me and for my family. We have done a lot of things together.
We have done a lot of things together here at the city, and I look forward to the next installment. Beyond that, I would like to thank all of our employees who came this evening to be introduced or reintroduced, as well as a room full of family members that were here for some of our promotional ceremonies earlier in the day. And this really, this whole community and this workforce is a family, and, and to that respect, we really had our best foot forward today, and we were very glad and, and very heartfelt to, to make some promotions and recognize some people today that are outstanding parts of an outstanding employee family. That's all I have, sir.
Very good. All right. Council directors, Councilman Hux.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations to the fire department, and particularly Battalion Chief John Young for their successful grant application for the next ambulance, which will cover one half of the cost. So thank you very much to the fire department. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilman Green.
Sir, Mr. Mayor, just one thing, to remind everybody that next Tuesday, the twenty-second, is the Mobile Food Pantry Day. This is one of those months that there are five Tuesdays, so it is the fourth Tuesday of the month, and it's the twenty-second, next Tuesday, from ten to one at the old municipal building. The Virginia Peninsula Realtors Association is our host this time, so everybody come out. Don't forget, it's next Tuesday, not the last Tuesday. Thank you.
Okay, very well. Councilman Canelo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just congratulate all those new employees, and certainly the ones that have been promoted in the city, and thank council for approving the resolution tonight to support some legislation that Delegate Helsel signed on, and I know he'll certainly support it. And I will definitely get that resolution to all one hundred and forty state legislators in the morning, to show that the city of Pecosin does and support our, our first responders. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Southall.
Yeah, first I'd like to thank Randy for being here to accept that contract. We, we have an extremely efficient city government, and it's been organized and put together by Randy Wheeler, and the, the staff is just simply outstanding from everything that they do, from the, the public services performed here in the building to road repair. We just saw an excellent project on With Creek Road, for which I received several phone calls and, and comments. And the, the city staff makes me proud to be part of the city, and, and Randy puts that together. I'd also like to thank the citizens who put their trust in me to reelect me to council again, and I'm proud to work with the rest, the rest of the city council, and I know Buddy Green and Carrie are both also proud to be here. I'm proud to work with them. And I hope everybody has a happy and prosperous new year, and I hope we can do everything we can to reduce these costs of increased refuse disposal.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilwoman Andrews.
Just second what everybody else has said, and just remind citizens that, you know, looking at the list we got, there's lots of board positions where terms expire, and if that's something that you're interested in serving the city on a board position, you know, encourage you to put your application in with the city. It's a one-page, simple application. I don't know how many boards there are, but a lot. So it's a great way to, to serve the city in areas that you're interested in, and just thanks for everybody at home that watches these meetings.
Okay. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Well, I want to thank council for the support to continue as Vice Mayor, and second what everybody else said about our new employees and new promoters, including Randy, Wayne, Evie, and Kim. That's it.
Okay. And I echo all your comments. I think they were excellent and spot-on. I will say that I think I've made my comments well-known about our staff this evening. So thank you all very much. Thank you for what you do, and what you will continue to do. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second, that we adjourn this meeting. Evie, please.
Certainly. Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven, zero.
Very good, and we are adjourned.